Please stand for the pledge and an invocation, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for bringing us together today in this important decision. We ask for your guidance. Lord, we invoke your name at every one of our meetings and ask for your guidance, but today more than ever, we especially ask for your guidance upon us as we go about making this important decision. Lord, we thank you for the many blessings you have given St. Petersburg College. We thank you for our students, our faculty, our administrators, our career employees. We also thank you for giving us Dr. Furlong during this interim period to lead our college so well. Please continue to bless Dr. Furlong. And, Lord, please bless the four candidates who have come before us, who have talked with us, who have met with us. Please help each of them accept whatever the decision is that this board makes today. And we thank you for these many blessings you have given us and ask for your continued guidance. In thy holy name, we pray, amen.
We are very glad that all of you are here with us today for this historic event, and I just have a couple of comments that I would like to make as we get started. The first comment is relative to a possible calendar that was given to me way back when, at the end of the summer, when we first contracted with Dr. Hockaday to be our consultant. And there's a -- I was going through my papers over the weekend preparing for today, and I was looking through this calendar, all these different things that we had to get done, lots of dates, lots of details, and the very last item on there said, "The board should make the hire sometime between April 1st and April 15th." Dr. Hockaday, you are a good man. I also just want to take a minute or two. I have several folks that I need to thank on behalf of my fellow trustees and myself, and I know that if I waited to the end of this meeting, when we made our announcement about our next president, many of you would scatter and you wouldn't get to hear this. So I'm going to do it now, and it's just going to take a minute or two. First of all, I want to thank the search committee. Chairman Dick Johnston and fellow trustee Ken Burke, Ken Welch, Susan Latvalla, Tanja Williams, Teresa Kanta Diakas, Tom Philippi, Earl Freitas, George Greenlee, Bob Ulrich, Joe Blanton, Scott Daniels, and Karishma Abdul. These 13 search committee members dedicated a lot of time and attended some very, very good and sometimes tough meetings, did a great job. Many thanks. We also had hosts for our four candidates, who escorted the candidates around to the various campuses over a couple, three days. Ron Bois, Janice Buchanan, Al May, and Vicki Westergaard, thank you. Courtney Autry, who made all the travel and hotel arrangements for all of the candidates. Our own Kim Corey, our board secretary, who made all the arrangements for all of the meetings and took those very important meetings -- or minutes, excuse me, that we have referred to on many occasions. Thank you, Kim. Our provosts and campus executive officers, who were responsible for meals, campus tours, information sessions, Yvonne Olmer, Karen White, Jim Oliver, J.C. Brock, Phil Nicotera, Conferlead Carney, and Stan Vittido. Our associate provosts, Psalms Mac, Linda Wimmer, Tina O'Daniels, Kathleen Griffin, and Greg McLeod. I also need to thank the institutional advancement staff, Mike O'Keefe, Wilma Norton, all of those who are responsible for the website, all of the press releases, photographs, all of the printed materials, Kathy Carr, Barbara Walter, Bill Frederick, Casey Feldkamp, Mary Hearn, Lynn Hammond, Lisa Wilks, Larry Douglas, Chris Gilberti, Ronald Lee Klase, and Jeremy Peplo. Thank you all very much. Human resources, Patty Jones and her department, including Kathy Ladwig, Jennifer Farazano, Josh Knip, Vivian Winters, Mae Whitted, Merle McDonald, Ruben McConan, Matthew Stewart, Brian Werner, Steve Mala, and Linda Schultz. Kathy Federico was in charge of all the arrangements and the setup here at the epicenter. Thank you, Kathy. Sid McKenzie and Joe Lang, who have been through many, many meetings and have advised us on the legal issues so diligently and superbly. Lynn Wolf, who helped with the scheduling and directing of the candidates' visits. Susan Ryder, whose diligence ensured that all the campus buildings and grounds were immaculate, not that they aren't on every other day, but they were certainly immaculate during the visits. Special thanks to the facilities chiefs at Seminole, Steve Vaughn; at Health Education Center, Chris Dixon; at St. Pete Gibbs, Gary Gray; at the Downtown Center, Bill Strel; at Tarpon Springs, Olin Conrad; at Clearwater, Phil Scala; at the Allstate Center, Matt Davies. Dan Barto provided security at the committee and board meetings and made sure that parking spots and ground transportation were available to the candidates. And a special thanks to the security chiefs at Seminole, Dick Lamb; at Health Education, Nate Golden; and Harold Best; at St. Pete Gibbs, Dan Harris; at the Downtown Center, Alan Dick; Tarpon Springs, Jay Hopkins; at Clearwater, Joe Barry; and at the Allstate Center, Mark McHugh and Harold Nesbit. A few other folks that helped at Seminole, Carol Brant; Ken Hayward; at Health Education, Linda Rubel; and Mary Gerst; at St. Pete Gibbs, Luanne Millard; at the Downtown Center, Sue Seun; at Tarpon Springs, Karen Naidoo; and Lisa Sherman; and at Clearwater, Gail McLune. I apologize if I have pronounced some of your names wrong. I've tried to get it right ahead of time. I need to thank at last Amelia Carey, who has been our board liaison from the very, very beginning. I met Amelia at the start of this process, and I feel like we have become very close friends, and I so appreciate everything you've done to help this process and this selection calendar run so efficiently. And last but not least, Dr. Hockaday, for your expert guidance throughout this. I think we're at a point now where all of us feel that we have a great opportunity in front of us and that it's a great, important, and historic time for the college, and we're just all very happy to be here at this point. So thank you all very, very much. Dr. Hockaday, the floor is yours.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. At the risk of not being able to say this at the end, under the same reasoning that you used, I'd like to say it now. There are a lot of pieces to a presidential search, but there's one piece that is more important than the others, and that is, when a board of trustees makes a commitment and then does what it says it's going to do. Not once in these six months or so have any one of you veered from what you said you would do, and that was, that you would involve the people in this county in this search to the fullest way possible. Number two is, you promised me this search was open, that nobody was predestined for this position, it would be a fair and open search, and that you would listen to people and you'd make your decisions on that and your good instincts. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I can't see any place that you veered from what you said you were going to do, and I want to thank you for that. You made working for you a real joy. I really do thank you for staying the course. Mr. Chairman, as many good trustees as you have will be as many opinions you will have about what you -- what process you need to use in these last few minutes that you will have together with this, but I want to make a plea to you as a board that some of these candidates in your mind are better than some of the other candidates in your mind. That's just how the process works. There's going to be some As, and Bs, some Cs, and Ds, if it works as it should. I would plead with you not, if there are candidates that you believe will not receive a great deal of consideration in the search, that you do not take the time to discuss those candidates openly. It just is not a fair thing to do. I would urge you to select two candidates, or three, or one, whatever your number is. I would urge you to select those from simply voting for two, if two is the number. Let's see who the two are, and then let's discuss those two thoroughly. But if there's someone here that you're not going to consider, it just is not reasonable to discuss strengths and weaknesses of someone like that. Mr. Chairman, I urge you to consider that, and we'll abide by whatever you decide.
Discussion? Mr. Johnston?
I was originally opposed to this, and the more I thought about it, and the more I valued Dr. Hockaday's wisdom. I know that Ken and I both felt we wanted to discuss, I think, all the candidates possibly, but I certainly, thinking about it, thinking about it from this last week, feel it'd be more positive for all parties involved if we narrowed it down to two, or whatever the number is, and then we thoroughly discussed those candidates. But first, we would follow Dr. Hockaday's suggestions, because his objections have been right on, and I would feel amiss in not following them.
Discussion or a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we follow Dr. Hockaday's advice, and we'll discuss the top candidates, if that's two, or three, or whatever.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Kim, we will need paper for each board member. We're going to list the four names. Go on to that deep room.
Yep.
Then we will see how it falls out.
We have paper right here. We have paper right front of us.
There is a pad in front of you. Use the pad and then we'll put it in the name.
Public.
Yeah, whatever's written on the pads is a public document by state law.
That is correct. Do you want to do it a different method?
This is fine.
That's fine. I'm just making that clear.
We did this all through the search process.
Right, that's fine.
It's fine.
So put our name on the bottom.
You want our names on this? Right, right.
Does that mean we're voting for ourselves to put our name on here?
Yes, but that way you could get one.
Here you go.
Thank you, Chair.
Four.
Wow. That's interesting.
Good advice. Discussion.
This is a hard decision. In my mind, Dr. Law is more of a proven factor than Dr. Keegan. He's younger and hadn't had the experience, but Dr. Keegan is a real breath of fresh air. And I'm glad to see that results, because everybody has the same problem I do, of narrowing it down from those two. But my decision will probably come on who I think is going to best fit this college in a leadership role, and will do the best job, and will be the safest candidate to pick.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Gibbons.
This is a tough decision. I think by virtue of both candidates having equal amount of votes, I used to have a football coach that would tell me, "I'm not going to call you a cowboy until I sing you right." And I can tell you, when you got equal amount of votes, I think we can call both of these men cowboys. I don't think there's any hands up, one better than the other. The legislature, I'm no expert by any means, but I think there's a bunch of folks in the room that can speak to the legislature. There's so -- it's not like it used to be, where you had people that served for 20 or 30 years. There's so much turnover now in the legislature that a person can come in from the outside and -- I really mean this when I say it, they write enough checks and get involved enough in campaigning that they can make an impact and a difference. The other thing is, we've got to remember what St. Pete College is bringing to each one of these men. They both served at other colleges, but this is a great institution to lead, and by virtue of any one of these men being president of the college, they're going to make a huge impact in the legislative process. So I think we have a tough decision, because I think they're equal, equal in terms of education and other things, but I think both of them are very good leaders where they are. The problem is, who can lead this college to the next level? Who will give the faculty kind of a -- see the faculty as a mate and look to them for answers, in some cases when they don't have any? I think we need to figure out which person is really going to come in, and change is tough, but we have to have some changes to move forward. Who's going to make the best changes for us to move forward?
Mr. Burke?
We were -- I want to, first of all, thank everyone who gave us input in this decision. It was wonderful to read the comments that were emailed after each of the visits. It certainly gave me a different perspective on one of the candidates, one who didn't make it, but it was a different perception than I had at the board interview. It was very helpful. It was also helpful to get the comments that were written by the senior administration, who spent a significant amount of time with each candidate, and those comments were anonymous comments, but they were -- I valued them. And one I want to read from, because I think they did a particularly good job at talking about what the board should consider. And it said, "In particular, the board should consider the following: the need to refocus on student access and student graduation success; two, the type of learning environment needed for the current and coming generation of students; three, new approaches for identifying skills needed by businesses; and four, the type of work environment the board wishes for faculty and staff." And basically, it took what are qualifications that we put down here, and I think those four points, if you had to narrow these down into four points, I think they did an excellent job at narrowing down those four points. So let's, you know, we advertised the candidate's attributes, and thank you for reproducing this, because I think it's important, because we did this back in October, and it's now April, and so it's important that we revisit what we said's important to us, and this, whoever this administrator puts it in, four nice points for us. So I kind of, this past week, and I think we can win with either of these candidates, and I will be, I will be very happy with either one, will feel very good about either one. I have a little bit different perspective than Dick. Actually, I kept hearing the word "safe," and I think we've never done the safe thing here at St. Pete College. We've done the innovative thing here at St. Pete College. And I'm looking for a person who is an innovator, not an innovator in the way of taking on new programs, but an innovator to make sure the need to refocus on student access and graduation success. The innovator who can take the types of learning environments needed for current and upcoming generations of students. The innovator who can take new approaches for identifying skills needed by businesses. And the innovator who can work in the type of environment that we wish to have for our faculty and staff. And I have to give, in my opinion, the slight edge to Dr. Keegan in this regard. I thought some of the things which he mentioned about shared governance. Shared governance would be tough, but I think it's innovative for our college. I think it's something when we're facing the economic troubles that we're going to continue to face, and Dr. Furlong could tell you, up in the legislature, they said, "This year's terrible, and next year's a disaster." And it's true. I mean, the stimulus money ends next year, and no one in Tallahassee, everyone in Tallahassee is predicting next year to be worse than this year, and it's a bloodbath up there this year. One candidate brings us the advantage of Florida experience, which I don't discount. At the same time, I think that could be compensated by Ed Woodruff. I think it could be compensated by encouraging Dr. Furlong to sign a contract with us to help us out and use that expertise.
Here, here.
But, and I, I did think that there was a little bit more innovative thinking, a little bit more entrepreneurial thinking with Dr. Keegan than Dr. Law. And when you were talking about this, this is no slight to Dr. Law, because both are fine individuals, both be fine leaders, and however we vote, we're going to end up with a good president. I just think, you know, and I don't want to use a hackneyed expression that I saw many times, "fresh start, breath of fresh air," but I do, I do think that there, there's that little bit factor there to keep St. Pete College being as innovative as it needs to be with one of the candidates. I am concerned, too, with financial management. We have some big issues, and dealing with the faculty is one of those issues. I mean, we've heard about the low morale here. We've heard about faculty members who come back and get hired as adjuncts, rather than the percentage of load. Well, there's only so much money, so where do you come up with that? So the partnership with faculty, when you're having these challenges that we're going to have financially, are going to become more acute, as far as how do we together come up with a solution? And I think a different way of handling that issue is what Dr. Keegan suggested with the shared governance concept. So I think there was just some pluses there. There's no doubt Dr. Law knows Florida better than Dr. Keegan. There's no doubt that he knows the legislative process here in Florida. I do think Florida tends to be a very open and welcoming state, though. And we've seen other presidents. We see Dr. Stevenson over Hillsborough Community College be very effective with the legislature. We see Dr. Schugert over Valencia be very effective. These are folks who came, one came from Texas, had zero experience in Florida, one came from, from St. Louis with zero experience in Florida. The president of Santa Fe Community College, Jackson Sasser, another one who came from, from Texas and came here and is effective with the legislature. So I think with the right tools, they can be effective. So anyway, I guess we're going to have to, each one of us is going to have to come and say, you know, where, a little, we're leaning, and you're talking about a scale which one's 99, one's 98 here, so the scale could be tipped very easily. But I said, if I had, if I had to go on the scale, tipping on one side, it would be Dr. Keegan at this point, but I'm certainly open to listening to other trustees.
Ms. Bill Racus?
Okay. This has been a very stressful time for me, and I'm sure for the other board members. It's been a great responsibility to have, and I hope that I helped make the right decision. I want to thank the candidates for applying for the presidency. We feel honored that they wanted to be president of our college. The comments from the faculty, students, and administrative staff have been very helpful. All had lots of recommendations from their previous friends and associates. The public has also been involved in this election. Everywhere I went, there was someone who mentioned the selection of our next president. Even Sunday at the baseball game, I saw a member of the Board of Governors from Tallahassee who gave her opinion. I called her the next day and asked her why, and she gave me some good reasons. I've had a very hard time making my decision. I like both Dr. Keegan and Dr. Law. I'm leaning more to Dr. Law, because of his previous employment at St. Pete College and his experience of president of three community colleges. The question always came up about his objection to the four-year college. I researched that, why he'd made that decision, and I am satisfied for his reason, because being president of Tallahassee Community College and FSU there being there, and Florida Millie being there. He promised to make us be our own, keep our own special status. I'm sorry, I'm nervous. Dr. Law has worked in the state legislature. He knows the system in Tallahassee and Washington. In fact, we would not be able to give, to get our, give our four-year degrees without political connections. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I'd like to share just a few of my observations. First of all, I agree with Ms. Bill Racus. I want to thank the four candidates for applying. I said at one point, "It takes a lot of courage to climb out on that limb and, and put yourself out there," and I admire all of them and commend all of them for being a part of this. And I, like Mr. Burke, feel like Dr. Keegan or Dr. Law, we're going to be, we're in a very, very fortunate position right now. When Dr. Cutler announced his intention to retire, that afternoon, I went home, or to my office, and the first call that I made was to the ACCT, and I spoke to Dr. Narcissa And I probably spent 45 minutes to an hour on the phone with her, talking about what our road ahead was, was going to look like. And she was a wealth of information and provided some very good counsel. And one of the things that she said that was the most striking to me, that I have thought a lot about over these last few months, and I mentioned it at one of our board meetings, and it was that because of the long tenure of our former president, 30 years, that there was a certain culture that would be created in any institution, having a leader for that long of a period of time, and that whoever Dr. Cutler's successor would be, would have normal challenges of coming in and starting When Dr. Cutler announced his intention to retire, that afternoon, I went home, or to my office, and the first call that I made was to the ACCT. And I spoke to Dr. Narcissa Polonio. And I probably spent 45 minutes to an hour on the phone with her, talking about what our road ahead was, was going to look like. And she was a wealth of information and provided some very good counsel. And one of the things that she said that was the most striking to me, that I have thought a lot about over these last few months, and I mentioned it at one of our board meetings, and it was that because of the long tenure of our former president, 30 years, that there was a certain culture that would be created in any institution, having a leader for that long of a period of time. And that whoever Dr. Cutler's successor would be, would have normal challenges of coming in and, and starting new as a new president, but would carry a very extra heavy burden in being challenged by that culture that had been created over those many years. And that the statistics kind of showed that college presidents following a retiring president over a long period of time like that, 20, 30 years, generally only last about a year and a half or two years. That was very scary to me. And I thought, you know, I understand it. It makes sense. And I have been thinking about that through this entire process. I'm a relatively conservative person, and I don't mean politically, I mean just in some of my judgments. And I know Dick talked about a safe candidate. I think sometimes the timing is good to have a safe candidate. I think the economic climate and the political climate in the state of Florida causes me to not want to be as innovative or as courageous when it comes to blazing new trails. And for that reason, I'm tipped a little bit towards Dr. Law. I think Dr. Keegan surprised a whole lot of folks when he came to town here. We knew he was good, but he is really good. I mean, he just, he blew it out of the water. And I got tons of letters and emails in favor of him. And then it made me go back and think too, well, you know what? He had a good advantage because he was the last one to be interviewed. I went back and started reviewing some of my letters and emails about Dr. Law, and they were just as passionate and just as plentiful. And I started thinking back about the interview that Dr. Law had at the Digitarium up at the Seminole campus. I walked away from that interview impressed beyond words. And so I too would be thrilled with either one of these candidates. But my conservative nature is one that would probably lean towards an individual who is tested, who is seasoned, who is a known quantity, who knows Florida, who knows the legislature, who has proven beyond a doubt that he is entrepreneurial and creative, endless energy, knows the community, knows St. Pete College. I've had many people come up to me at events unrelated to the college, and that's one of the benefits Dr. Law has, is because folks know him and remember him from his time here before, but they would come up to me and say, "Dr. Law is the person. There's no question." Dr. Keegan, of course, never having lived here, I'm not going to hear that from other folks, and I understand that. So I know that Dr. Keegan could learn the system and would be great. Dr. Law knows the system and can lead and be great on day one. And that's how I feel.
Mr. Chair, just for the record, to correct you that a final candidate to interview was BK Walter.
Pardon me, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Another statistic, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to give to you. I'm looking out there at Joe Lang, and years ago, when Dr. Cutler was hired, we thought the same thing following Mike Bennett, that anyone who followed Mike Bennett would last about two years. And so all the statistics didn't work out in that case. I guess in a lot of ways, of the two people, and I do appreciate, because I had an opportunity this weekend, to sit down and read everybody's comments. And I also appreciate everything and the time that the people put into them to express their views. I think all of us took them very seriously, because I had time on Sunday afternoon and read through each and every one of them. And when I put them down, I was just as mixed in my thoughts as we all appear to be here because we've got two excellent candidates. One thing that has helped me make a decision is that I've worked with Dr. Law back when he was, he headed up the House Higher Ed Committee staff. This is many years ago. And I've worked with Bill Law on the Pepsi Commission. So I have some firsthand workings with him, and I always found him very satisfactory, very satisfactory. The only complaint I ever, ever had against Bill Law was the fact that I kept telling him, "Bill, I don't understand the words you're using because your vocabulary is so much better than mine. You need to talk down to me a little bit." And he said, "Oh geez." Because we were writing at that time the post-secondary education planning law for the state of Florida. And he said, "My God, Dick." He said, "If you don't understand this, the legislature never will." But, so I've worked with him and I had some personal knowledge of how he works and how he operates, and I've watched him operate with people. I didn't get a chance to spend any little time with him when he here at the campus, but this is all prior to him coming here. And like I said, he's, he's tried and true. He's been, in my mind, I think he's had three college presidencies. He's geared in his career to, I think, handle an institution of this nature. This is, this is now a very complex institution. We not only have, we have high school students going here, we have bachelor programs going here, and it's going to take a broad person, in my mind, to do that. So I think at the moment, I appreciate all everybody else's comments, and I wanted to hear everybody else's comments because I've been torn both ways. I said that Keegan, Dr. Keegan, when we looked at his CD, one of the comments that one of the wives of the people that, that were on our search committee happened to see his CD and said, "Who in the world is that?" And he kind of went through that a little bit, joked about it. But I guess from the very beginning, when I saw that, I kind of looked at him and said, "Well, I wonder if, if you're putting yourself out on a CD like that, that you wouldn't do the best job you possibly could." Not that I could hold that against him, but I think we would all do that. But I said, "I think Bill Law probably is the safest candidate at this time in our progression forward for St. Petersburg College." And that's kind of the way I feel. If there are other comments that people want to make, I certainly would be anxious to hear them and listen to them.
Mr. Gibbons?
I love the comments that have been made here. And I just want to rewind to a time where I wasn't on this board. I think you were on the board, Dick, and I almost think Ms. Bill Racus and Ken were on the board, when a senator from Seminole wanted to make four-year degrees available at St. Petersburg College. And you did exactly what was not safe. And that was open yourself up to expand this college to accept four-year degrees. Now, I'm not arguing one way or another, but none of us on this board have seen any of these two men operate on any of their campuses. So we must go by what we have here and what we believe in our hearts is the right thing to do. Personal relationships need to be thrown out the window at this point. We need a leader that's going to lead this college to new heights and better expectations than what we've had in the past. Not that they were bad, but we're moving on to a different place. While the Florida, having been in Florida and knowing Florida, that's all great, fine, well and then. Who's the best leader out of these two to lead this college forward? And I want you all to think back to the times when people were saying you could not offer four-year degrees. Think back to that. You did exactly what was not safe. Is 10 years enough? Mr. Law said that 10 years is what he was looking to serve. Is 10 years enough to take this college to where it needs to be? I'm only asking questions. I'm not advocating for any candidate. Is that enough? Or do we need someone who can lead longer, just as Dr. Cutler did? We really need to take the personal stuff, all the memories that we had, and that's not to diminish anything that you said, Dick, it is just the truth, that we at this point have to do exactly what is not safe. We have to pick a president who's going to lead us forward. And I don't want to look back two years from now and say, you know, "We made a safe bet, but, you know, he's really not the guy for the job to carry us through the long haul." And that's not what you did when you said, "We want four-year degrees here." You went for the long haul and look where we are now. So I challenge each one of you to think about that. Think about who's going to be best to lead this college for the next 15 to 20 years if we have to have that person. Think about who's best for the faculty. Think about who's best for the staff. Think about who's best for Sid and, and all the other people that work here at the college, and including us. Who's going to be best to work with us? Who's going to be best in shaping and molding where we go as a college? Because we're no longer St. Pete JC, we're St. Pete College. And going forward, we're going to have to have a broad innovator, a big thinker, someone who can carry out and execute those things. That requires a lot of things, not just know-how, but execution and energy. So think about those things as we move forward in this process.
Other comments, other discussion? Mr. Burke?
Deborah, I appreciate your remarks. And I think whoever gets selected here, that the challenge of your remarks has to be given to that person. And I think, you know, both of the candidates who we have here talked about what they would do in their first 30 days. And both talked about how important it is to cement the relationship between the president and the board. And that's one of the primary things. I mean, because if we're not together on the same page, we're in a, a path of disaster. And then they've all mentioned their commitment, obviously, to visiting the campuses, the faculty and that type of thing. And it is a tough decision for us to make. And I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion just to get things out there. I move that the college appoint Bill Law as our next president and authorize Terry Brett as chairman and Joe Lang as board attorney to enter in negotiations with him in a contract.
Second? Anywhere?
Second.
We have a second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Gibbons?
Mr. Chair, I would, I'm going to be remiss if I don't do this, and I know people are going to leave because now they know who our president is, but I really wish they wouldn't stay for one second. We have had a phenomenal, I don't mean just great, phenomenal interim president in Dr. Furlong, and I think he deserves a round of applause.
And he's still interim for a while or more.
Yeah, he's right.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know when our, or how the terms will go. We may not be successful with Dr. Law immediately, but I would like to see us extend Dr. Furlong's He has a consulting business and we could still hire him as a consultant, because I think it would be helpful to this college for the two of them to operate together for a short period of time. How much that time is, I don't know. But I'd like to be sure that Tom is around here to help the new president take the first couple steps. And so I'd like to see his contract, and he has a contract existing with the college, I understand, that we alter that contract, and I don't know what the terms are, you all can figure those out, to keep him around for a transition period.
Mr. Johnson, if you put that in the form of a motion for 60 days, I would second that.
Can we ask not for a mo, I mean, I don't mean contracts, we got in trouble in the past, voting on contracts at a meeting here without looking at it and understanding everything. I'd rather challenge the chairman to come back and bring us something at a board meeting, get it to us in advance. We all look at it. I love Dr. Furlong, but that's not the intent.
I think that makes some sense.
I think our first order of business, and Mr. Lang and myself, along with Dr. Hageday, have talked on several occasions about our next president's contract. And Mr. Lang, along with Tracy Janisch, have been working on a draft contract that we hope to present now to Dr. Law, the first part of next week. We'll be in touch with them, and that's, that's the first order of business.
Mr. Chairman, what we have tried to do is take the thoughts that the board had and have a generic contract regarding to who you selected today, but that would focus more on base salary and less on perks than perhaps our prior contract did. That was a source of some concern. And she indicated to me that while she couldn't have it ready for today, she thought she would have it ready by the end of this week. And that will become the base to start the discussion with now Dr. Law as the selected candidate.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We've talked about timing. I don't know what the normal terms of a contract should be, probably between two and four years. Since this is a new president to us, should we look to the shorter period of time as a contract rather than the longer period?
Well, of course, that's a board decision. What you will get back and what we sit down with Dr. Law with as this opening document is going to have a blank for the number of years. And it, I suspect in part, it's going to be dependent upon what can be negotiated with Dr. Law.
Maybe keep it blank, he'll be in his best behavior.
Well, I want to, I want to make sure that his commitment to our baccalaureate degrees, I'm very, I really question that, and I want to make him promise us that he's going to do that. And I want that in the contract.
Okay.
If he doesn't do it, then we have to get somebody else.
Dr. Hageday, you had talked to me at some point about the length of the term of the contract and your suggestion.
Mr. Chairman, if you were to survey the country, you'd probably, you will find that it's three years. Sometimes it's three years rolling, sometimes it's three years within itself, self-contained, which means at the end of each three-year period, you would rehire. Some boards do forward, but boards are moving away from that much. One is not enough because there's not enough time to get your work done and properly evaluate someone. Three is a good number to work from.
Thank you. Mr. Burke, you have?
I gave, I gave Mr. Rames some copies of Florida salaries and national salaries today. He already has some that Tom had gotten, four more is in process of getting. Excuse me. So you'll have something good to work from there. You could do some comparison.
Thank you. Mr. Burke?
Well, Mr. Brett gave a very long list of thank yous, and I think this board needs to give a thank you to you, Terry Brett. As chair, you have exhibited exceptional leadership during this entire time of a very difficult year of many, many issues, but especially in this process of hiring a new president. You've conducted yourself in exemplary manner, and I wish to say thank you for your tremendous leadership.[1774.48] leadership.[1773.75][1773.75]